Yes, ma'am. So we've got Josh Carroll here with Malden and Jenkins to present a presentation on the fiscal year 24 audit. If you'll come up to the podium and...
I turned it off. Okay. There we go. All right, well, thank you for having me tonight. As they said, I'm going to present the results of the June 30th, 2024 audit. This is, you know, a snapshot in time as of June 30th, 2024. Next slide, please. We can skip to the next slide. This slide is a little bit about Malden and Jenkins. We've been around over 100 years now. We spend a lot of time and resources investing in state and local government audits. I spent my entire year doing nothing but counties and cities and state agencies and development authorities. I don't do any tax work, and everyone that works on the county's audit is also in the same boat. We have a kind of a dedicated governmental unit where we do nothing but invest all of our year into government audits. So we bring a lot of knowledge and expertise to your annual audit. Next slide. The statements are the responsibility of the county's management. Our objective as your external auditor is to express an opinion. We followed all the generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards, and we did issue an unmodified or a clean opinion, which is what you would hope to receive. We don't audit the Board of Health or the Development Authority or the Hospital Authority. They have their own auditors. We get reports from those auditors, and they're included in your annual report, but we do not audit those component units. Next slide, please. We also issue a report on compliance and control. We kind of come in and we look at basically all your major financial cycles. We look at how you receipt cash, how you disburse cash, how you process invoices, how you onboard an employee, how you terminate an employee, and we look at your controls there, and you have a clean report there as well. We also look at your federal grants. You know, we're kind of spending the ARPA money still. We had three big grants, the county's main grant, the sheriff's office got a big grant that kind of helped us kind of recoup some of the retention efforts that we had to get, retain officers or hire new ones. There were three big grants there this year. We audited those programs. We looked at the grant agreements, the compliance supplement from the federal government. We looked at how you spent the money, all the reporting requirements that go along with that, and we have a clean opinion there. So, you know, big grants are not really a norm for the county. They come in and out, but there've been a lot of them through the COVID world, so it's been good to see the county kind of, you know, do everything we're supposed to do with that money so far. So, next slide. This slide, if I was, you know, a commissioner, I think I'd want to know, do we have anything unusual or aggressive in our accounting policies or maybe our estimates that might sway your financial statements one way or the other? And you don't. They're disclosed in the notes. They're very similar to, you know, all your neighboring counties and even big counties in Georgia. The accounting policies and estimates are pretty much the same. You know, your estimates are mostly your useful life or your capital assets, which is just, I don't know, think a building or a vehicle's going to last. So I feel pretty good about your policies and your estimates. Next slide. We have a good relationship with management. It takes two. We come in, we ask for a lot of information, not only from finance, but, you know, all departments. Nothing seems hidden or covered up. We get everything we ask for, everything we need, so we appreciate the county partnering with us to get the annual audit complete. It is a big process, and we couldn't do it without the county's help. Next slide. We didn't have any audit adjustments. We get a trial balance from finance. We do our thing. We audited, and we go through everything, and we didn't have any adjustments. We didn't have to post any journal entries, so, you know, hats off to James and his team. The books were very clean, certainly not the norm in local government. So James is doing a really good job keeping the finances and all the transactions that are flowing through the county. So we appreciate that from him. And we are independent. We don't do bookkeeping. We don't come in and post journal entries. We don't help be close your books and get ready for an audit, so we don't get compensated for any of those kinds of, you know, kind of management services that might influence the clean opinion that you received. Next slide. So the next few slides are just kind of your revenues and, you know, your fund balance and your general fund. This slide, you know, the property taxes and sales taxes are your largest source of revenue. That's been, you know, standard over the years. Every other county's the same way. Next slide. Expenditures, you know, public safety is typically the largest bucket for most local governments. In our public safety, we spend a lot of money there, so that's the same for the county. These numbers have been pretty consistent the last few years and no big fluctuations up or down. Next slide. And this is our general fund. It's the change in fund balance. There's a five-year trend here. It kind of shows how we've added to fund balance. You know, the big jump in '21 was we got the CARES money back in the infancy of COVID, and almost all governments use that to pay salaries, so we kind of paid salaries that would have ultimately been paid by the general fund. And then that's why you have the huge jump down in '22 is because the general fund had to start absorbing those costs again. And then in '23 and '24, you know, the economy's doing really well, sales taxes are up, you know, statewide. Everybody's has great taxes revenues coming in, and we still have ARPA money. We're using the ARPA money mostly to fund some capital initiatives that we've had planned. So the general fund is adding to fund balance due to those reasons, so it's... And the next slide is, this is probably the most important slide. It's your fund balance and your general fund compared to your, you know, your expenditures and transfers out to other funds. And the GFOA is the standard-setting body for local government. They recommend two to three months at a minimum, it's like 16% to 25%, so the county's at 50%. So you have a very healthy fund balance, and it has, you know, kind of trickled up the last five years because of, you know, mostly the COVID money and, you know, sales taxes are doing well. Next slide. So we do have this comment. It's kind of finding, you know, nobody likes the word. This has been here for a number of years. There used to be more bullets here. We've kind of put in some mitigating controls. James and his team took on a little bit more duties, and we kind of got rid of what I think we're going to get rid of. And most of these just deal with, you know, the department may only have one employee or maybe two, and they're doing multiple components of a transaction. And that, you know, it does present some level of risk. Someone could intentionally misappropriate assets. Not that anybody would do that, but the risk is there. So we do kind of just kind of continue to kind of highlight them in our report, and, you know, it's outside of hiring additional employees. I don't know that they'll go away, and that's generally not a cost-effective measure just to satisfy the auditor's bullets, but we do kind of continue to highlight these to management. But, you know, we walk through the controls over, you know, your major points of cash, like, you know, the tax commissioner's office, and they don't have a receipting of cash issue, even though they're listed here. There's more cash going out the door, but they, you know, all their money is due to someone else anyway. None of them is really their money. So, I mean, it's, you know, I don't think it's something the county really needs to be overly worked up about, but we do kind of just continue to highlight it. And the next slide, these are management comments. They don't make it into the audit report. They're just kind of FYI, and these are also, they've kind of been here for a few years. You know, the journal entries, James does post entries. He reviews his staff entries, but he posts entries, and there's no... Not that James would do anything, but he does have, you know, some opportunity there. And we kind of recommend that county adopt a disaster recovery plan, part of your, you know, maybe your cybersecurity and information technology. And the jail, they have funds that they really don't know who the money's due to. It's someone else's money. It's not ours, and we kind of recommend that if you can't identify who the money's to, the state of Georgia sheet law, say if it's over five years old, you should turn it over to the state and kind of let them handle, kind of disperse the money. And the sheriff is kind of, they're a little delayed in their depositing. We found some receipts that were from early June that didn't get deposited until, you know, maybe July or August. We kind of recommend, you know, from, they don't need to make a deposit every day, but, you know, maybe at least weekly or semi-monthly is a good idea to deposit those monies. Money laying around is risky. But other than that, you know, we had the one finding, and these are just management comments. We can go to the next slide. We do offer services outside of the standard audit. We have a government advisory service group. They service nothing but local governments. They're not CPAs. They do advisory work projects. They deal with kind of like operational assessments. They look at, they're very transactional-based. How is, how are we operating not only based on our own policies and maybe our long-term plan, but just against best practices? And how are we utilizing our resources to ultimately deliver services to the citizens of Stevens County? And, you know, some things they find in those are just like, I always like to use the example of why is the employee put the yellow piece of paper in the green folder? And that's just because that's the way somebody's been doing it for the last 25 years. And maybe that's good, maybe it's not. Maybe one department has too many employees, and maybe one department could use a different and an additional employee. So that's the kind of work that they do. And so if that's something the county is interested in hearing more about, I'd be happy to, you know, connect you with the partner that heads up that group. Next slide. We also offer IT and cybersecurity solutions. You know, we had many clients that they get ransomware. No one's too big or too small, and the cybersecurity world's ever-changing. So, you know, if it's, we do penetration testing, kind of identify what, you know, what information do we have for our citizens and how are we, you know, protecting that? So that's what that group does. It's also another service we have outside of the traditional audit. If the county is interested in learning more about that, I can certainly set up a meeting. And next slide. You know, Gatsby's always busy. We implemented some major Gatsby's the last two, three years, and we're kind of getting a break. There's nothing major on the horizon. There'll be some small projects for James and, you know, myself. Next slide. Those are just more Gatsby's. Next slide. And we can go to the next slide. And we do continue to provide free CP to all of our clients. They get, they're quarterly. They get eight hours quarterly, so 32 hours annually. James and his team attend those. Anybody at the county's welcome to attend. They are heavy government accounting-based, but if anybody wants to learn more about that, you know, I can get you signed up. And the next slide. That's really it. Like I said, it was a clean audit. It kind of goes how it's supposed to go. I appreciate the county partnering with us to get it done. You have a clean opinion, and just, you know, the one minor segregation of duties finding. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Yeah, thanks for having us. We enjoy working with everyone.
Next item.
Okay, we're now moving to the public hearing process of the meeting. The way this will work is we will first call for those wishing to speak in favor of each item. Each individual will have up to 10 minutes to speak. Our county clerk will be timing. When you hear the timer go off, we ask that you kindly wrap up your thoughts. Following from that, we will ask for those wishing to speak in opposition to each item. Those wishing to speak in opposition will also have up to 10 minutes to speak. If this involves a land use item, there will also be a rebuttal period provided for the property order in the amount of three minutes. We also have two readings tonight as well, two final readings. And then, of course, regarding the public hearings, there will also be time for commissioner comment before the public hearings open. Are there any questions about how these public hearing processes will begin tonight? Okay. All right. With that being said, we will move into the first public hearing for the intent to opt out of the statewide adjusted base year ad valorem homestead exemption pursuant to OCGA 48544.2. On January 8th, the Board of Commissioners held a called meeting to discuss House Bill 581 and its potential impact on Stevens County. At that meeting, there was clear understanding that we wanted to begin the opt-out process, of course, with the understanding that Stevens County Board of Commissioners is not sure if they want to opt in or out of the bill. It is just an opportunity to get a bit more information as well as garner public input on the process. Because of the very strict timeframe to opt out of the bill, it must have begun in January 1st and end by March 1st, and three public hearings must be called, as well as certain legal notices published, the process was begun. With that being said, we've now arrived at our first public hearing for this process. Are there any commissioner comments or questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. With that being said, we'll now open the public hearing for the intent to opt out of the statewide adjusted base year ad valorem homestead exemption. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the opt-out? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition for the intent to opt out? Yes, sir. If you'll come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening.
I'm David McGlough, feet up Garland Road, south of Tacoa. The state of Georgia has seen fit to offer this homestead exemption to elderly people. Yes, suits me. The majority of people in Stevens County, 58% according to the Tacoa record, have said, "Don't opt out of this. Leave us with the exemption." And there's even more people in the state of Tennessee than the 58% majority. I don't know exactly what the number is. It's in the 60s. So my recommendation is if you want to stick and honor the votes of the majority of the people, opt out. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We got it. Opt out. We got it. The sign helped.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, the public hearing, first public hearing for the intent to opt out of the statewide adjusted base year ad valorem homestead exemption is now closed. Can you clarify whether you're in favor of an opposition?
I'm not sure what it's about at all, so I'm in favor of someone explaining to me about Ellen Beaster.
Well, we can give you a high-level overview. Basically, it freezes your homestead exemption and does some market adjustment based on the economy so that your, the pace at which property values have been going out, going up, is kind of not pacing with how we really need to manage the budget. So it just freezes that homestead exemption. But it also gives you options to collect a floss, correct? But we'd have to bring that to a vote as well. So it just freezes your homestead exemption at a very high level.
Oh, that doesn't sound good, does it?
No, it's...
It's a positive for homeowners, so it doesn't freeze it. I'm gonna, it kind of caps it where it can only go up 2%.
Whatever CPI is.
Whatever they calculated is per year. So it would help people who have a homestead exemption where it's your primary residence to prevent astronomical increases in property value like we saw with COVID, where it went from here to here. It's more going to be like here to here. You can only go this far. So for people who actually have opted into a homestead exemption, and there's not that many in our county, I believe, but something like 3,500.
3,500.
It would benefit those people.
So it does benefit, the homestead does benefit.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
That's all I need to hear.
Yes, ma'am.
No, you're fine.
That's why we're here.
Absolutely.
Okay. We will now move into the second reading for proposed changes to the Stevens County land use ordinance. I won't go into all the changes that were already discussed at the first reading and public hearing. I will mention that there were two material changes requested by the Board of Commissioners at their last meeting, and those are now presented for ultimate adoption today. The first is Section 59-4 for district requirements for agricultural residential. Originally, the tract width at the right-of-way was increased from 30 feet to 200 feet. It is now increased from 30 feet to 150 feet. So that was reduced by 50 feet. And secondly, under Section 59-8 or 3 district requirements for residential single, the tractor width at the right-of-way was increased originally from 30 feet to 150 feet. That has now been reduced from 30 feet to 100 feet. So that is, those are the material changes that were presented from the first and second meeting. No other changes were presented regarding that. Secondly, is the second reading for the subdivision ordinance, proposed changes to the subdivision ordinance, and no material changes were presented between the first reading and the second reading. So what will be voted on tonight is exactly what was originally discussed as detailed in the public hearing.
Thank you. Move on to the land use.
We will now move into the land use public hearing. We've got one item scheduled tonight. That is a rezoning request from CMH Homes 3206 Highway 17, alternate Tacoa, parcel 042C026. The property is currently zoned as commercial general, and the proposed action to be taken is to rezone .479 acres to residential single for residential use. This is to combine with the property to the west, which is zoned residential single. Recommendation from staff and the planning commission is to approve as requested. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? Okay, we'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this rezoning request? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this rezoning request? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? The land use public hearing for item number one of land use is closed. Thank you.
All right, we'll get started with our regular meeting. Thank you all for being here this evening. Mr. Teasley, it's good to see you back, if you will join us at the front. We missed you. Chuck's been having to do your job.
Oh, wise and powerful God, we come at land in mighty name of Jesus Christ. We thank you, Father God, for everything you do for us, Lord. We like to take this opportunity to thank you for waking us up this morning, dear God. Thank you for keeping us safe, Father God. Thank you for giving us a right mind to come out this afternoon and do the business of the county, oh, Father God. We ask that you bless these commissioners, dear God. Give them wisdom and give them understanding, Father God, to do this business. We ask that you bless the staff, dear God. Let them continue to do a good job, Father God. Now, Lord, we ask that you bless all the citizens that are here tonight. And we just say whatever said or whatever done here tonight is pleasing in your sight, and we'll be very careful, Lord, that you get the praise, you get the honor, and you get every bit of the glory. For we shall in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any additions to the agenda this evening? No? Any additions from...
No, ma'am.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda's approved. Any additions, corrections to the minutes? Okay? Do I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
Motion to approve the meetings from January 8th and January 14th minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Want to take us through our first point of new business, please?
Yes, ma'am. Moving into new business, item number one, rezoning request from CMH Homes Incorporated as discussed in the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, board to consider motion to adopt amendments to the Stevens County land use ordinance and authorize chair to sign resolution.
Motion to approve the amendments to the Stevens County land use ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, board to consider motion to adopt amendments to the Stevens County subdivision ordinance and authorize chair to sign resolution.
Approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, board to consider motion to adopt updated land use application fee schedule and authorize chair to sign resolution. The only change on this fee schedule at this time is that a $50 fee has been added for plat review based on the updates to the subdivision ordinance.
Yep.
Thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five, board to consider motion to approve change letter for October 3rd, 2024 contract between GDOT, Tacoa Stevens County Airport Authority, City of Tacoa, and Stevens County Board of Commissioners and authorize chair to sign letter. The purpose of this change is to reclassify expenditure line items in accordance with these spending limitations on the type of funds allocated. There is no additional funding being requested from the Stevens County Board of Commissioners. I do believe airport manager Amber McCall is here if there are any questions from the airport.
Oh, her, somewhere. Up there she is. Thank you.
We're good. I don't have any questions.
I don't either. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Item number six, board to consider motion to enter into agreement with Novo Solutions for Public Works Fleet Maintenance Software and authorize chair to sign agreement. You will recall that you approved funds for this in the fiscal year 25 budget. After reviewing multiple options, Novo Solutions is what the Public Works Department would like to utilize. Public Works Director Jason Holland is in attendance, if you've got any questions.
I've already got mine answered. I'm good.
Yeah, we had them when we did the budget.
I see.
He's back there.
He's back there. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven, board to consider motion to appoint budget officer for fiscal year 26. We are asking you to appoint a budget officer.
Y'all want to do it? I don't.
I think we'll let James do it.
Okay.
Motion to appoint James as the budget officer for fiscal year 26.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? James, you still got a job.
Yep.
Thank you for appointing him and not me.
Do it.
All right. Item number eight, board to consider motion to adopt fiscal year 26 budget calendar. It is available for your review as well as the public's review. It's pretty similar to the past, but once we adopt this, we will begin the budget process.
Okay.
That's great. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number nine, board to consider motion to reappoint county clerk.
Don't want to think about that one, too?
No, I thought Sam was doing just fine.
Motion to reappoint, Miss Samantha Turner.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 10, board to consider motion to reappoint Law Offices of Sanders Rank and Skilling as county attorney.
We will think about it. No, I'm just kidding. Motion to...
What's that billing rate again?
We'll work on that. Negotiations open.
Motion to reappoint.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number.
Still have a job.
Item number 11, board to consider motion to appoint Dennis Black to the Stevens County Planning Commission to fulfill the unexpired term of Greg McFarland ending March 31st, 2027. We are very thankful for Greg's service. Greg has served his first term on the planning commission. Unfortunately, this year, he's decided to retire. We're very thankful and happy for his retirement. With that being said, there is a vacancy on the planning commission that needs to be filled immediately. We are asking that you consider appointing Dennis Black.
Thank you.
Motion to appoint Dennis Black to the Stevens County Planning Commission to fulfill this un, unterm, unexpired term left.
Second.
Any discussion on that item? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we appreciate Mr. Black's willingness to fill the unexpired term.
Absolutely.
Great. Item number 12.
Will he be in tomorrow?
Yes, sir. I'll be meeting, I'll, I'll be reaching out to him tomorrow to schedule a meeting to begin his orientation.
They have a meeting pretty quick.
Yes, sir.
I think the item is on their agenda already.
Next Tuesday.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
They'll hop right in.
Item number 12, board to consider motion to approve variance request to the alcohol ordinance to allow real property holding Tacoa, Georgia LLC doing business as Currie Club to process a renewal application for consumption as opposed to a new application.
Approved.
Second.
Any discussion on that item? If not, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 13, board to consider motion to update Stevens County employment handbook and authorize chair to sign resolution. We are adding in a cell phone and motor vehicle record policies as required by ACCG. Adopting these policies continues to secure a discount for us on our liability insurance. We're asking you to consider reviewing and supporting resolution.
Motion to approve changes to the Stevens County employment handbook.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Invo, invoices in quotes over 10K.
We've got three for you to consider tonight. The first is from acre oil company in the amount of $12,604.2. This is a regular gasoline drop. Funds are budgeted. The second is from acre oil in the amount of $11,347.39, also gasoline. Funds are budgeted. And then third is from 10-8 Fire and Safety LLC. This is for $10,794.40. This is for annual flow testing for all of our county fire. This is required. It's an annual requirement, and funds are budgeted in the chief's council.
Thank you.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Any discussion on any of the items? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills are going to get paid. Administrator, our finance report, I think we have one?
We do, yes, ma'am. Finance Director James Alrod will be providing your fiscal year 25 second quarter financial report.
Great.
Thank you, Christian. First of all, I want to thank my staff for all they do, day in and day out. The audit that was presented earlier would not go as smooth as it did if it weren't for their work. I'd like to recognize Courtney Pickens, our staff accountant for the, for the county, and of course, our HR director, excuse me, HR lady, Ms. Kristen Luciani. They're both well appreciated in my department as well. Also Marie Haley, who's not able to be with us tonight, I'll recognize her name as well. Again, we work, try to present the team effect daily, and we do a good job. So again, the audit that Josh presented earlier is as of June 30th, 2024, for the full year of fiscal 2024. These numbers I'm presenting to you now are for the second quarter fiscal year 25. Halfway through the year, obviously, everything should be right at 50% in the perfect world. Total general fund revenues are at 79%. Obviously, we get all our revenues in this second quarter, December, November time period of the year, so that's why they're so high, and we still got six more months to go. I spoke to Dean earlier today, and she has collected for the county a total of 97% of the property taxes. She does a great job collecting for the county during what she does daily. Other than the property taxes, including that, total revenue for the county just far is 17 and a half million. A million and a half of that is from the current premium we receive. A billion is from the city for paving projects that was budgeted. Also, 120,000 of this is building permits. This is $40,000 over what we had December 31st last year, which continues to show the growth in the county now. Our interest earning accounts are trending as budgeted with a total of 298,000 thus far. For expenditures overall in the general fund, it's right on target at 50.3%. Can't ask for any better than that, overall in the general fund. However, there are a few handful of departments that are a little over budget. Just pointing out these few, data processing department is over 10%, and this is due to additional costs we had back in Hurricane Helene and do some extra stuff during that time, and also adding new employees. New employees just came on board January 1st due to elections, having to set up emails and computers and that type of stuff. Buildings and grounds department is at 58%. This is just 8% over, and this is mainly due to vehicle repair maintenance we had earlier in the year. The sheriff office is at 9% over. This is mostly due to some unbudgeted prepaid items that we was aware of last year at this time, and also some heavy vacation payouts we had last month. Again, nothing we can control at this point. Public Works Department is at 55%, and this is mainly due to the street paving of the city of Tacoa.